Hi, welcome all. It's Thursday, January 20th and we are having our Historic Preservation Board meeting be resumed tonight. And we're opening the meeting up at 6:36. Do we need to take roll? Ashley?
No, you can just state there is a quorum present and that this is a study session.
Okay, there is a quorum present of the HPP Board and this is a study session. We're gonna go ahead and start with our first study session topic, which is ID 22003, and that's to you Andrea.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna share my screen here for the presentation. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah. Great. So, I am Andrea Mimno, Senior Planner with the Department of Community Development. And tonight, the board has the opportunity to dive into windows on historic structures and assess the need for a window policy. The agenda includes a section on the background will include significance of historic windows. And we're gonna touch on the fact that historic windows can indeed be preserved. In the analysis, I'll address what staff has identified as some concerns with Littleton's existing regulations. And how other communities have established window policies to fill in the gaps in their regulations. And then finally, staff has identified some topics that could be included in a window policy for HPP to consider. In your packet, you have probably seen that there's some links and some attachments that address some of the topics that will be talked about tonight in a little bit further detail. At the end of the meeting, staff is requesting direction from HPP. And the questions are, should HPP pursue window policy? And if yes, if HPP can provide input on the topics considered for the window policy to be addressed at a future HPP study session. And I'll just point out quickly here, the two pictures here, we have the historic, we have the historic version of this building on Main Street in Nevada and then a somewhat recent current photograph of the same building. And you have to look a little bit closely, but you can see on the current building that along the side street there, there was a window replacement. And one of the replacement windows is rounded on the top. Not the worst window replacement, but nevertheless, they happen quite a bit. So, windows are considered character-defining features of historic structures. In the photograph of the Gothic-style church that I put up here, the windows are crucial to the architectural style. And you can see that all the architectural details on the structure are consistent with the Gothic style. And there is quite a bit of architectural detailing all over this building. In the other photograph, the one of the farmhouse, the windows are also important. And there are not many architectural details, but the simplicity of the design and the arrangement on the building conveys a place and time in history. And this farmhouse is in Colorado. So imagine for a moment that the windows were replaced on either of these structures with a different style of window. And how different they would appear. And not only would the architectural style be compromised, but the impact may be great enough that the integrity is lost, reducing or negating its historic significance. So this applies to both high-style structures such as the Gothic church, as well as vernacular structures like the farmhouse. Just quickly, here's an example of the visual impact of an inappropriate new window design. And you know, we've all seen this. Windows that had been put into existing openings that don't quite fit the size and what the impact of that is on the building itself. So, in order to get going on a window policy, it's good to point out, I think, exactly what we have in Littleton in terms of windows. So on this slide, we have a selection of commercial windows in Littleton. And we have Town Hall on the upper left, Carnegie on the lower right. And then we also have the the Art Modern Building that sits on Nevada Street, just off of Main Street. And a mid-century design over on the left. And of course, the Presbyterian Church on the upper right. Some residential windows are shown here, and we have a lot of different styles represented here, including Denver Square, Craftsman-style, mid-century modern, Norman Cottage, and Queen Anne. All quite nice windows. So it's important to say that windows can be repaired. And that's news to many homeowners who are told by window replacement companies that the windows are beyond repair and that they are costing the homeowner money because they are not energy efficient. And that new windows are the only logical solution. But windows can be repaired and they can be made energy efficient. There's some information in your packet on that. And the right craft person is needed for a good job. And when this occurs, much money in historic significance can be saved. So, the situation in Littleton is that we have some applicants that have had some concerns through their application process, particularly with windows. And I just wanted to sort of establish what the questions and concerns are by these applicants. And in the first one, I think the big question was for the pliables shown here, that they were interested in creating a new storefront design that included windows that would open. And now, that had been already done on Main Street in the Historic District, but that was under a different HPP Board. And when windows are operable, they need additional, you know, they need additional dividers within the windows so the look is different. And so, while I told the applicant, you know, I think that you have a shot with this and it would be worthwhile to go for. It was unclear. And here we had a business owner who was in a hurry to get her construction going. And so that was, it caused some concern on her part. In the next one, on the lower right-hand corner, you can see the houses in the Loudoun Heights Historic District. And there was a recent COA for a house on this street. And the question there was, with some new windows that they were putting in, what window materials would be accepted by the HPP? And they were using a high-quality window, but they wondered, well, are we gonna need to put in wood or not? And the idea for a lot of homeowners, any property owner going to a public hearing and having to thrash that out in public is, you know, it can be a little bit difficult for them. The third one I wanted to point out is the one on the upper right. And here we had a homeowner who was replacing some windows. They have an enclosed porch on the back of the property. They wanted to put in some windows that were probably not replicating the original window design. And we don't really know what that was, but it was probably a little bit different. Yet you couldn't really see those windows from the street, or if you could, it was just a little bit. And so because they're not very visible, would that be accepted? So in all cases, all COAs were approved. But the idea is that we could potentially make our process a lot more smooth and predictable for applicants. So we have some existing regulations, of course, and I wanted to just briefly go over these to see what, so we all know it is that we do have. You know that when the ULUC was passed last October with the Historic Preservation Regulations, that the Secretary of Interior Standards was adopted with that code. And within that document, there are recommended treatments. And I pulled out some here for windows. And there's a lot of really great stuff here, you know, identify and retain and preserve windows. Add storm windows with matching with matching design and repair window frames. But what we don't have here is specific information on the window design itself for a replacement window and the materials that would be required within this particular community. So, here we have some other regulations here. Preserve the functional decorative features of a historic window. This is from the Downtown Historic Preservation Design Guidelines and Standards. And these provide some good direction, but again, we don't have everything that we need. So if you look down to 3.20, use materials in a replacement window that appears similar to the original. Everyone has their own idea of what similar is.
Can I ask that question?
Yes, sure.
And I don't mean to interrupt, but I was wondering, like with 319, 320, and 321, when it says like a replacement window, match a replacement window to the original in its design, are you talking about, like, there's an original original window and somebody wants to replace it? Or there's already a replacement window and we want to go back to the, what was there originally?
I think, yeah, I think it could apply to both situations, honestly. You know, if, you know, if we have a historic window that's beyond repair, and granted, that's rare, but it does happen. And then the other would be, right, we have historical photographs, so we know what the original window looked like. And we could go back to what that actually looked like.
Okay, I was just a little confused when I was reading through this.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's how I interpreted. I did, you know, we had a consultant prepare this for us years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So similar to the original. Well, does that mean double hung gets replaced by double hung? Or does that mean that we're going to be looking at the dimensions of all aspects of the window to match it just as closely as we can? So there's another example of where we don't have specifics that maybe we would like to have. And then finally, the Loudoun Heights Historic District Design Guidelines. We've got, again, we've got some good stuff here, retain and repair original wood windows. And then we've got a little bit here on window materials. So, don't replace with vinyl, aluminum, or other modern materials. I'm not really sure, really, other modern materials. Maybe there's a modern material that actually could work. And then there's also a question about, well, what about on the back of the structure versus the front of the structure? Do we have different standards for what you can see versus what you can't really see? So therein kind of lies the problem. Now, other communities around the country have established window policies to fill in where their regulations leave off. And so I included these for you to look at in your packet, but just basically the highlights of them. In Oregon City, the applicant must make a case to replace a historic window. So that's something that we might consider too. When you're applying for a certificate of appropriateness, you want to replace a historic window, you need to submit a historic window assessment with your application. And we actually have requested that. It's been many years, but we have requested that in the past and received that. And Oregon City does identify what they consider to be acceptable materials. And then they also have different standards for those buildings that are non-contributing within a historic district. In Ann Arbor, there's a lovely house up there in Ann Arbor. So they want to make a statement right off the bat that only seriously deteriorated components of windows will be considered for replacement, to kind of set the tone for it. And I thought it was interesting, they even go so far to say that wavy glass shall remain. So they want to preserve the glass too. That's interesting because of, of course, it didn't start out as wavy. That happened over time. But they have no policy in place for nonhistoric windows. So if you're replacing a nonhistoric window, what are the what are the guidelines or requirements there? And then the last one, Alexandria, Virginia. So they come right out and say, if you can't see it from the right-of-way, we're not gonna regulate it. And then they talk about historic windows, if they have to be replaced, it has to be an exact match. So I think that's better than what we saw in some other cases, but I, there, potentially, there's still a question about exactly what is the meaning of "exact." And then they also, I thought this was interesting, alternative materials may be used at upper levels. And I think this was at a third story or above, because presumably it would be difficult to decipher that different material from a distance. And then they get into specifications for screens and vinyl weather stripping. And out of all the policies I reviewed, that was the most specific. Well, that was the only policy that I saw that addressed weather stripping and screens. Through that in there is something that the board maybe might be interested to know, maybe what to consider. So we'll go into what the staff has identified as potential topics if the HPP wants to move forward with it. But I've laid out here on this slide what the process could look like for this window policy. So we get direction, staff gets direction from HPP tonight to move forward and identifies what topics you're interested in. And staff brings back another communication next month that kind of dives into detail in each of the topics that are picked. And then at a future study session, a draft would be developed and HPP could review and comment on that. And then that leads to an HPP public hearing. And with that public hearing, we would notice designated properties. Those property owners that would be subject to the new policy and HPP would consider it at the public hearing. And then depending on how this all plays out, we would likely need city council public hearing on it if there's a change to the city code needed to accommodate the new changes to the policy. So that's how that would go. And then last slide, here are the suggested topics. And you can read them here. How does an applicant make a case that a historic window is beyond repair? Second topic, are any windows exempt from the requirements for preservation? And what are the acceptable materials for replacement windows? And then identify design elements to be followed. So window size, dimension of window elements and frames and light dividers. And finally, what will be the standards for non-contributing structures in historic districts? So with that, I will turn it over to HPP for discussion and of course, available for questions.
Okay, thank you. So the point of tonight's meeting, I guess, is to decide whether we'd like to do a new window policy and ask staff to go ahead with that. So anybody have any comments or discussions? And I can't, I can't see everybody, so you'll have to let me know.
You know I do.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Chris.
Do we want to leave Andrea's screen up or?
There we go, there we go.
I just feel better when I can see people. So, you know, I read through everything and thank you for putting this together, Andrea. It was nice that you had kind of different cities' window policies. So, you know, in looking at all of the ones that you shared with us, I kind of feel like there's good bits and pieces from each one of them. Like Ann Arbor's. What I really liked about that was they did a site visit to the property. And so they had, you know, HPC reps go and kind of help do a window condition survey. And I feel like that's a way for us to get more involved and get out into the public and have them interact with us more. So I really liked that idea. I don't know about the very detailed window specifications, but I like kind of how they had the existing and then the proposed, you know, in columns on their form, so that you can kind of say, like, this is what it looks like now, and this is, you know, what we're proposing. So you kind of have that comparison. Alexandria, Virginia's, they really, kind of like Georgetown, Colorado, have a really specific look they're going for. And so they're kind of like the neighborhood HOA, where, you know, every little thing has to be approved by them. I know they kind of had the thing about, like, if it's not in the public right-of-way, then it doesn't matter. So that might be something for us to kind of loop in. Danvers, I don't know if that was Connecticut, but they had a paragraph, and I just felt like that kind of opened themselves up too. Because they were very vague. So I don't know that there's a whole lot from them that we could use. Oregon City had, you know, making the case for it, justifying that, and then the different standards for the non-contributing resources in the district. So, you know, in looking at your next steps, I feel like we need to be thorough. Just because in this day and age, you know, people are always kind of, I hate to say looking for loopholes, but like we need to address as much as we think we can with this policy, because it's gonna be with us for a while. So I, some of the things that you had on your sheet, like a qualified consultant should prepare the analysis. I absolutely agree with that. Because otherwise, then you can just find anybody who will say, oh, no, you need to have your windows replaced. I think we should be specific about it being as close to the original as possible. And I do think that we could have slightly different standards for non-contributing buildings. But I think if we stray too much from, you know, just because they're a non-contributing building, they can kind of put whatever window in they want, that really starts to change the character of the district. I mean, they're already a non-contributing building to begin with. And then if you start mucking it up even more, I think you could really see some big changes. So I would say that, you know, we could allow, have some allowances for them being a non-contributing building. But I wouldn't want to go too far off of that. And then the other question I kind of want to throw out is that we might want to think about is, what if we have replacement windows on a building? So we have like a historic building and then they, like it's a 1900s or 1920s building. And then in the 1950s, they put in windows. And now they want to change it to something else. Oh, we want energy-efficient windows. The 1950s windows are historic in their own right. So we kind of need to think about, like, would we require them to work with the 1950s windows? Would we want them to go back to what was more appropriate in the 1900s or the 1920s when the building was originally built? So that might be something for us to toss around as well.
So, so Chris, should this be stuff that we talk about at the next meeting? I mean, I think tonight is, are we gonna recommend that we, that we update the window policy for HPP? So you would be for updating the policy? You would recommend to the staff to do a new window policy?
Yes.
Yes, okay, that's good. Because next,
Sorry, I thought we were supposed to discuss some of those questions that she had on that last slide.
Yeah, next session, it looks like that's when we will go into all those details. I think tonight is just, we discuss whether we think the policy now is okay or if we want staff to update it. Is that correct?
Well, I'd also like to know what topics that you would like to have addressed. So on the PowerPoint, I have five suggestions. And maybe you want all of them or not. And maybe there's some additional topics that the board would like to add.
Okay, I liked in one of them, they had lists for their applicants of local firms or individuals that would do window repair and SASH repair. And I thought that's really something that would be good. If I were a homeowner, I could come to you and you could say, well, this is somebody you'd call, because otherwise, you have to do all that research yourself. And the person you call is good. So that was something I thought we should discuss too. So, who else? Who wants to talk?
I just wanted to mention that I like the idea. And I'm not suggesting, I apologize, I should have waited to be called on, I'm sorry. But, but thank you. I, I wouldn't begin to suggest what, what these would be, but I love the idea of providing exemptions. So that if, if you know for certain that the window you're talking about is exempt from the, from the rules, then it saves everybody the time of having to argue over it. And, you know, and I'm not making an argument for whether or not any of these, like, one of the jurisdictions had, if it wasn't visible from the right-of-way, then it was exempt from the rules. It's a possible exemption, but I like the idea of there being exemptions.
Okay. Rick?
Well, I've read all of that, all the stuff. I'm thinking maybe what we should do is if everybody read the documents, what you like or didn't like about them, because that will set the tone for where we move forward. I like the National Trust window study. And this is something that people don't get when they want to replace the window, the cost supplier, and just give them all this marketing stuff. The National Trust makes a very strong case why you can keep any window and make it efficient and save a whole lot of money. And I think that's the point we should make to people that replacing windows are gonna be the biggest expense you probably have on your property. And if you're only focusing on energy conservation, the amount of energy you're saving is minimal compared to the expense. It will never, ever pay back. Because you're going, for example, from an R3 window to an R6 window. So what? It's all about the glass, and R6 is not much. So I think one thing we should do is somehow have studies where people can read and learn about windows and windows efficiencies on their own, make it easy for them to find that. We can't present that. It's way too cumbersome. If you look at the National Trust document, it gets pretty technical. But if someone's interested in replacing the window and we send them there and they learn about it, then they'll have more information when they talk to a supplier. And they can be, make more intelligent questions to a supplier about costs and benefit. And that would just be, you know, something behind the website as far as information that people would look at. What I liked about the Oregon City was that little two-page document that, very simple, and explained about the windows, but there's a whole lot of information you have to go behind that. One concern I had about all of this is we have to apply this window policy to our whole city, not just downtown and not Loudoun Street. But it has to apply to the whole city, because we have a whole city that we're dealing with. And none of these deal with mid-century modern. So we need to get a mid-century modern window policy in place as well. And with mid-century modern, it's going to be a lot of plate glass. Now fortunately, there's a lot of places writing these policies, so we won't have to invent anything. We can make references and just talk about what you need to take care of.
So would you like, would you like mid-century modern as the topic then on the window policies?
No, we have to cover all the windows. We have to have separate sections. We have different decades of windows. We have storefront windows. We have, you know, 19th century windows, 20th century windows. We have mid-century modern windows. And I would see if we structure the website just, just right, people who even don't have a historic house could maybe use some of those resources when they're making a decision or replacing windows. And they're just a regular house, so that they know if we can provide that information, that would be good. The National Trust document, and there's another one I read, makes both cases. But as you can see, anytime you get into windows, it really gets technical very quickly. I would be curious, in Oregon City, they have a lot of resources, hundreds and hundreds of resources there in their districts. I would be curious to see how their policy works as far as people coming in and asking for recommendations and how the city I would be curious to see how their policy works as far as people coming in and and asking for recommendations and how the city makes it work. Because language can can get you in trouble, like simple versus as in-kind replacement can make it difficult. But Oregon City, to my mind, had the most comprehensive approach to all this. I thought Ann Arbor's was a little wordy and boring when you read the first page. The replacement guidelines were strict in its wording, but I like the strictness of it. We have to say we are not going to allow you to replace. I think that's the number one key. Maybe not quite those terms, but we have to make it real clear that saving windows is the number one priority. I don't know if we need to show a window style with all the details on it, because we have so many different kinds of windows. So we'd have to look and see how that works. But what I did like about the Ann Arbor one again was that specification sheet and then pointing out to each part of the window that you're replacing, why?
See, Rick, I'm sorry to interrupt, just a point of clarification. This would only apply to historic districts and individual landmarks, not really a whole city policy.
When I say whole cities, we don't know what future landmarks are going to come into the city, right? So we know they're out there. So we just have to make sure that we will address those. Cause right now we have a historic district that has its own guidelines, Loudoun Street, right? They have their own guidelines, they determine it. Downtown has its own guidelines that determine it, right? Doesn't necessarily apply maybe to Alamo, but we don't know what else is going to come in from the city. We know there are other historic landmarks. We also know there's other potential historic districts that are different periods that may come. So to write a policy real strict to what we have may cause us problems with new properties coming in.
Thanks for that clarification.
That's why I say the whole city, we need to be just general, because over the last twenty years, we focus so much on downtown and it kind of leaves out everything else.
Amy, you had your hand up?
I've got more Laura, but Amy can talk.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Finish, Rick, I'll save mine till later.
You took a breath, so I.
The town of Danvers is actually Salem, Massachusetts. So when, in a lot of these towns, Danvers, Alexandria, many of these buildings were built before Colorado became a state. So we have to be careful on what 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 cities we select and that their resources are closer to the timeframe of our resources. And Oregon City is closer to us than Salem would be. Or Alexandria, which is a very specific architectural style, a rowhouse style in that city.
Rick, that's why I mentioned Georgetown, because it's like they're going for a very specific look and a very specific time period. And yeah, they have eighteenth and nineteenth century buildings, so it's.
Yeah, and and I I just, I did look for window policies that might be more like what, like communities like Littleton, but there weren't, there weren't a whole lot online. And so, you know, what we got is a selection from different historic districts and different areas across the US.
Nice to look at that.
Is there anything in Colorado, like if we checked with this new CLG coordinator? Like Fort Collins seems like an obvious one to me.
Fort Collins would likely have one and we can check, we can, I can make a call to them and see what they have.
But what I'd like about what you selected, Andrea, it just shows the different approaches from minimal to extreme that different cities have. I'm curious of how well that actually works on paper. And of course you have to deal with the politics and all these other regulations and also the style architecture. I mean, even in Ann Arbor, that's much higher style architecture than we have here. So that makes a big difference in how we approach our building in Colorado. I mean, even in Denver, Denver has much higher style architecture than Littleton does. Let's see what other one. And then from your PowerPoint presentation, I liked the Oregon City requirements. I thought they were really good. I liked the Michigan requirements too. But like we mentioned before, we need to have some sort of policy on how we do replacement windows. We can't just let anything goes, because that in a non-contributing building downtown, put in a stained glass window in one of the not a non-contributing building, one of the two we have could upset the rest of the street or make it look better, but it may not be as critical an issue for us. The Alexandria's requirements are much more strict. But it's a very different city than we have. I mean, it's a real high tourist city and people go to Alexandria to see the architecture in that city. And then the one requirement they had about windows not visible from the public row. Buildings in that city are all row houses, so you really, there's no spaces between them. You can't see behind these buildings and they tend to be tall. We don't really have a situation like that in in our town, even on Main Street. It only goes back a half a block. So almost all the sides of the buildings in our city are visible. Does that mean they have to all be restored? We will talk about that. That's just something to keep in mind.
The point of clarification, you 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 said row and actually what I meant was right of way, visible from the right of way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, there's, okay, right, right, R O W. In Alexandria, you can't really see behind the buildings there, because they're tall, they're all tight together. So what goes on behind is not visible. We don't really have that situation here in our city, because if you're in Alamo, you see the backs of all the buildings on Main Street and vice versa.
So Rick, do you have a suggestion for a topic that we could discuss next month? Would you have a a specific topic?
I do, but let's hear about what everybody else thought about presentation, the other documents.
Okay, Amy?
Hi, thank you. Andrea, thank you for putting together the presentation that was really comprehensive and and easy for a non-architect like me to understand. So I appreciate that. I I just want us to be, or I guess my thinking is we need to be mindful that the new kind of inclusive historic district is brand new. It was just created. And so there are a lot of folks in in the district for whom this will be brand new. So to the extent that we can, if if we do decide to go forward with this, to the extent that we can keep things exceptionally simple and somebody, I forget who suggested, like putting together a resource guide and, you know, easy to to understand descriptions and kind of steps to follow, to the extent that we can make it as user-friendly and take out as many pain points as possible, that that would work for everybody's benefit, I think.
Oh, sorry, Brandon, go ahead.
Are you sure that I can wait?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I was, it was similar. I I thought as a homeowner in a new district, clarity is kindness. And so the ability we can educate and make things clear is actually kind, as opposed to cumbersome. And then a future topic, just seeing some clarity on materials. You know, Loudoun can do can do their own things. They can think about vinyl and aluminum and and downtown appearing similar. Clarity on that, I think would be helpful as well as the topic at some point in time.
Okay. Lisa?
Yeah, so I think I'll probably focus more on the process part. It's what I'm interested in, because I was really excited. One of the things I was most excited about with the new code is that minor and major alterations chart that we would have, where it would be really clear for people, what's a minor alteration that can be approved by staff and what's a major thing that needs to come to us. And so I think this is a really great opportunity to kind of start that and make, like create a carrot, basically, if we, if you are meeting these guidelines at like all these examples that you've given us, then you can stay at a staff level approval. You don't have to, you know, stand before us. You don't have to, you know, take the risk of not knowing exactly how the decision is going to be made. That was really helpful, Andrea, what you said about just the applicant's experiences over the last couple applications related to window replacements. So I think you get, you know, what the dividing line is between it being a minor and major. So to me, the most important things are what you can see from the public right of way. So and obviously repair is the preferred option, but I think realistically, we're going to get a lot of replacement windows and I personally am probably more flexible on materials. So that'll be an interesting discussion, I think, for us to talk about those materials, like what, where that dividing line is for materials of when something gets kicked up to have to come here. So that's definitely a big topic. And then, uh, related to the public right of way one, I think that it was at Alexandria that exempts it, everything that's not visible. I don't know that we should go that far. I think that it's still important what you can see or what people can see from other places, not just the public right of way. But I do think there should be more flexibility for things that are not seen from the public right of way. And especially if you don't have historic photos, like I'm remembering that one on Bemis Street, to tell you what it was. Having flexibility there, but trying to, you know, keep with the period and things like that. So I think, yeah, just those levers of what what's where we should be flexible and how we create that division between what becomes a staff level approval and what becomes, what should get kicked up for us to deliberate on. And one thing that I also think is really important to the design, like the two things that on top of materials would be like the Mollians or Muntens that design. There was a lot of discussion in, I think, all of those where they were saying none of those, the interstitial things in just in the middle. But I do think that there are good examples with the applied ones. But that's where I'm probably more flexible than other people. So I think that talking about that would be really important, because I think creating the, keeping the number, the Sash design similar and the Mollian similar is really important. But I also question that if we become more flexible with materials, it's not going to be able to be constructed exactly the same. So there will, you know, I really like that, that sheet. Uh, all those different details, but I think as a no manufacturer, yeah, it was like fill in like existing and proposed. Like it's not the exact.
Yeah, that was Ann Arbor. Yeah, that was like nice.
Yeah, I really liked that, but I think that there maybe needs to be like a, you know, within an inch or something sort of flexibility with that, because I don't think you can manufacture aluminum the exact way that like a carpenter can build a wood window. So I think those are my main points.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Jason?
I I I very much enjoyed the the back and forth, but I I don't have anything to add other than, no, I I I'll I'll just. Yeah, I won't repeat, but I appreciate it.
Okay. Okay. So Andrea, at this time, do you want us to like come up with a list of topics we'd like to add to your list? Or do you have a general idea already?
Well, let's see, I I think that, as I understand it, that's this correct, that we're going to have everything on the list that I had. And then we had some additional ideas too. And so if people could just say what their additional ideas, just that piece, so I can take notes on that, I think will be good.
Okay, I think one of them was a resource guide for people, maybe with a spec sheet. Another one was a discussion on materials, flexibility on materials. Another one was like Lisa said, a minor major alterations chart that we could look at to discuss about that. Let me see, what else? Rick, did you have some?
Well, with windows, which has been discussed for the last fifty years, you can fill a library up with the technical information and discussions. And I think our goal should be what Lisa said. Let's develop a policy with enough information that people can make a decision, work it out with the staff and not come to us at all. And I think, I think that can be done in almost every case. What what would be, we had to be careful about is carefully selecting research materials for them to look at and read to become familiar with the window. So that they can understand it, but not get overwhelmed about all the, all the detailing. Cause you can go nuts reading about windows. The Park Service has written many brochures, the Trust has. But what's really come up the last few years with energy conservation is really focusing on why are you replacing the window? If it's for energy conservation, it's not going to pay. You're gonna, you may, you may want to spend twenty-five thousand dollars, but you're not going to save that much money in energy. So energy conservation, if that's a primary motive, it's probably a false one. And the window manufacturers are presenting a false savings. Most window replacements are going to resolve drafting problems and infiltration issues. That's where people feel uncomfortable about a window. It's not the window itself. An older window is you can tighten them up and make them feel better.
So are you suggesting that maybe we do a topic that talks about that?
What what kind of, yeah, topic and what kind of technical information will we provide to people so they can make this, learn on their own and learn what the, what the difficulties are? So that they don't have to come to us for.
Okay, okay, you got that one. Another thing that we talked about, and Rick and I think you said this at the beginning was eventually we will be, there will be homes or businesses across the city of Littleton that will not fit into certain timelines, there'll be different timelines. So I I thought you're talking about defining the different decades of windows might be something that we could be a topic too, so that we all know that this is sort of a nineteen twenties window or this is a mid-century modern window or or a forum house window, so that we know what kind of windows are across the city of Littleton. I think that might be something to talk about also.
Yeah, I think that would be important. I was just thinking about, you know, these older examples in the back east, they have a lot of divided light windows. How many divided light windows do we really have in the city? We have a few, but not really a whole lot, because later in the twentieth century, they just started going with the single pane Sash for the most part. And and Littleton has a different architectural style. But we do have to include mid-century modern. Mid-century modern commercial and mid-century modern residential. And I know that in Denver and Karina Park and some of the other places, they do have Risanoff Park, they do have guidelines for for dealing with windows. So we don't have to invent anything. We can reference to those. Maybe what we should do is just a quick survey of how many original windows to buildings do we actually have in the city? I know downtown on Main Street, most of the commercial buildings have had their windows replaced at some point. There are a few that still have the original windows, like the old Littleton Independent Building, which is next to the chocolate shop. Can't remember what's in there. It's got a red door in the front. They haven't replaced any windows on the first floor of that building. And then the OG Hill which will be a hundred fifty years old this year, still has the original windows on the second floor. And that's what the wavy glass is. Wavy glass is just a floating process that was done a hundred, two hundred years ago. And you get this waviness versus the plate glass that we have now. But if we have an idea of the kind of windows we have in the city, they'll help us focus more on design guidelines.
Is that something that we could eventually add to the Littleton Legacy List?
You know, we could probably look at, we could probably just look at the buildings on a legacy list. The ones I've put on HL, on our website where I've got pictures of buildings, you could probably just look at them and get it, get an idea of the kind of windows. And just driving down the street and looking, you don't have to look at my neighborhood, but no, and Loudoun Street, all the streets. West, west of Windermere would be good. The streets east of Windermere, north of Littleton Boulevard, where there's a potential historic district that's been identified. Just looking at the kind of windows that are there would set a tone for the policy if they were ever to come in for a district or something like that. We'd sort of know where the historic districts may be in the city. The the mid-century modern houses will probably just be scattered.
Okay, Lisa?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I don't know, I was just thinking about how we did the walking tours last year. And it would be kind of interesting to, if we had some way of like, if you just walk down Main Street, which ones do you think are original and which are replacements? Because I think there's a lot, like, a lot of the examples we saw were against aluminum windows. But I think that a lot of people, unless you touch it, can't tell that it's aluminum versus wood. So it'd just be, I don't know that we have time or it's not the right season right now for like a walking tour, but I was just thinking that would be, if you're out walking around, try to, just like Rick said, try to see if you can tell what's real or what's. if you're out walking around, try to, just like Rick said, try to see if you can tell what's real or what's original and what's a replacement. Because I think that might inform our decision or our discussion.
Okay, Chris?
I was just gonna say, I've been out serving in City Park South. And, you know, some pretty high-style houses and, you know, craftsmen bungalows, four squares, that kind of thing. And a bunch of apartment buildings along 17th on the south edge of the park. And I was talking with one of the owners and the apartment building has all its original divided light windows, except for like two units. They had, you know, problems with them and so they opted to replace them and he said they used a, a combination of fiberglass and wood. So that is kind of like the newest material. And I had never heard that before. And I look at windows all the time and it's hard unless you can go up, like you said, Lisa, unless you can go up and touch it. We are stymied a lot of the time as to whether they're original or replacements. And, you know, that kind of thing and what the material is if we're doing a full survey, so. Yeah, I, I would agree, it's sometimes it's, it's going to be a tough call.
Okay.
You know, the other thing we have to keep in mind is the overall appearance on a street side. I mean, I wish we had higher styled architecture, but we don't. So what are we actually trying to preserve as far as Littleton's cultural and heritage? And we get into nitpicky detailing on a, on this real specific window element, but the rest of the building is real plain, it's probably a little bit over the top. And we just have to be kind of caught, excited of that. Also, on windows, if you go to the higher-end companies, high-end windows, they're going to be a closer match than the cheaper companies. And vinyl is cheap, so anything vinyl is not going to do it.
And it doesn't last.
And it doesn't last more than 20, 15 years if you're lucky, maybe 20.
Seven, sometimes.
Sometimes. If you go, and insulation is a big issue, a lot of people spend all this money on windows and the insulation is really crappy and you still got infiltration going all around. And they spend all this money and they still have the same problem. I think that's something we can make people aware of, so they don't spend all this money that way. But if you were to go to, like in Loudoun, in Loudoun Street, the house that we looked at on Loudoun Street, they were using Marvin Infinity Windows, and I have them in my house. And they're fiber, they're a fiberglass window and they can extrude those fiberglass in much closer profiles than some of these smaller companies can. So I, I have no problems going with fiberglass. Fiberglass composites, which you're talking about, Chris. What's nice about fiberglass, it has the same coefficient of expansion contraction as wood. So when you put one of those windows in, it's more compatible with the building than vinyl or something like that would be. The one window type we've had replaced, the commercial windows downtown are using the extruded aluminum, they're not working. I mean, that's just a regular extruded window that could be used in any building. And if it's a historic building and using those extruded windows, like in the alley, it's, it, it doesn't, even though the openings might be the same, it's not even close, it looks like a modern storefront. And so we have to be careful about the extruded wind, aluminum.
Okay. Okay, does anybody else have a topic they'd like to suggest to Andrea? Amy? You're, you're good? Brandon, Jason? Okay, so Andrea, what do you need us to do now? Do we, we don't, since you want us, we need to recommend that you all look into a new window policy. Do we vote? Do we recommend? What do we do? I don't know what we do with this study session.
No voting at a study session.
Right.
But I think I've heard from all of the board members, it sounds like as a group, there's a clear interest in moving forward with a policy.
Does everybody agree to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay, all right, so we're going to have another session on this and get into detail on each of these topics and start to formulate what Littleton's policy ought to be.
Okay, okay.
Is there anything that we can do to help you, Andrea?
I was just gonna ask the same thing.
You know, I could use maybe some help.
Well, do you want to just email us with something or once you kind of get organized with how you want to proceed?
Yeah, I think that sounds great, thank you.
Okay, I'm happy to help.
You know, doing window surveys is fun. If everybody just likes to go out and take a walk, you just walk up and down the street. I mean, you get outside and you, you get exercise as well as being outside.
Yeah, I find it's, you know, a street that maybe you walked up and down a lot of times before, all of a sudden you start looking at the windows or the roof or, you know, you pick out some feature and all of a sudden the street becomes so much more interesting.
Yeah. Or you start seeing it everywhere, like you start noticing those, you know, features on other houses that you never noticed before.
Right.
Okay, do you need us to do anything else in this study session, Andrea?
We are good, Laura. That's what I need, and unless, you know, there's more to discuss, I think I have it.
Okay, Chris?
I just have a question, and Ashley can tell me if I'm.
No questions.
No, it's, at our last meeting in November, we were kind of sitting around talking, because we had a, we had two different things going on. And so when we were kind of having some discussions, we were talking about like, what does the H P B want to set, you know, do they, do they want to set some goals for 2022 of some of the things, you know, since we made it through the process of doing the resurvey of the downtown and presenting all that information and Andrea compiling it and presenting it to the city council and it passing. And so we were all kind of throwing out a few things and, and somebody said, oh, save that for next year, save that for next year. So now it's January. How, like, would that be a study session, would be, would that be a formal meeting? Like, how do I get that on the agenda for another meeting so that it's not May and we're suddenly saying like, hey, what do we want to accomplish this year and it's halfway through the year?
Right, so Kim and I have had some preliminary discussions. And I've also discussed with Jennifer Henninger too, and Jennifer felt that it was important that we, the H P B waits until after the, after the council retreat, which is in the beginning of February.
Okay.
To see what their goals are so that we can be consistent, you know, to the extent that there is something to be consistent or not consistent with, but, but it would be good to see what, what they come up with. And then we talked about March as a possibility, but then we're just one month away from the new board.
Okay.
Right?
Speaking of the new board, if you, Kim asked me to remind everyone that board applications are due January 31st for those of you who have terms ending this year. So just remember that if you're planning on reapplying there, do January 31st.
So, and as for a study session or whatnot, Kim and I discussed different formats and one of them was the idea that it would be outside of a regular meeting, because I can never really control if an application comes in and it will be too much to have a retreat plus, you know, an actual application. And so we'll work on that further and also send some information out by email that each of you can respond to, what might work for you and what preferences, that kind of thing.
Okay, okay. I mean, I, I understand, like, you know, there's a new board coming on in April or partially new board or whatever, but I think we could still at least start outlining some of the goals for the H P B in general that we want to, you know, start working on, based on our past discussions. So, okay, thank you.
Okay, okay. So does anybody have anything else to discuss?
I was just gonna ask, do we know when the, what the date is for the February meeting? Because I know it usually gets messed up by President's Day.
Yes, thank you for reminding me. So in February, it's going to be the Thursday after President's Day. So that is going to be.
The 24th.
Yeah, February 24th.
Yeah.
There's a million things going on that day for some reason.
Yeah, I might not be.
Okay, well, we'll take a, I, I think maybe then we'll take, we'll take a poll and if we don't have a core of them, we'll need to make another arrangement for that.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Okay, we'll know now.
Well, that was good that you brought that up, Lisa.
Yes.
Yeah, well, if there's anything, not anything left to discuss, then I go ahead and call this study session over at 7:35 this evening. Okay, so thank you all very much. Oh, wait, Lisa, you're saying goodbye? All right.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you.